Good morning. I welcome to New York City Committee on Civil and Human Rights. Please place your phone on silent mode or vibrate. At any time during this hearing, do not approach the dais. Thank you for your cooperation. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Nantasha Williams, and I serve as Chair to the Committee on Civil and Human Rights. Thank you to everyone joining us for this morning's hearing. I'd like to start off by wishing everyone a happy Black History Month. I'm so proud to be able to hold a hearing on the state of Black New York, and I look forward to honoring Black History Month with a meaningful and productive discussion surrounding the past and present reality faced by Black New Yorkers. Defined as institutionally created and reinforced privilege for some groups of people and a lack of privilege and access to resources by others, systematic inequity, also known as structural inequity, has been a barrier to the success and advancement of marginalized groups for a long time and continues to have a negative impact even to this day. New Yorkers of color long experienced the negative impacts of systematic racial inequities with these disparities often affecting Black New Yorkers acutely. Studies show that Black New Yorkers are more than twice as likely to be impacted by material hardships in any given year compared to white New Yorkers. And are more than three times as likely to be impacted by persistent material hardships over the course of four or more years. Redlining, educational disparities, housing and food insecurity, and equal access to adequate healthcare are just some of the issues that can still be linked back to the systemic inequity embedded into the foundation of this country, this state, and this city. At today's hearing, I'm hoping to really dive deep into the circumstances and systemic factors that contribute to the ongoing inequities that Black New Yorkers face while also gaining insight on any recent advancements and efforts the administration made to rectify these injustices, including its own interagency work and its direct engagement with affected communities. This morning's hearing will also cover current status of racial equity planning. In 2022, New Yorkers overwhelmingly voted in favor to pass three ballot measures proposed by the Racial Justice Commission. As a result, the creation of a racial equity planning process and final plan is mandated. In June of 2024, this committee held an oversight hearing on the implementation of the Racial Justice Commission's ballot measures. And while I feel that we had an engaging and informative hearing, I must stress the importance of ongoing oversight and collaboration when it comes to this extremely, especially in today's climate, extremely important work. Not only does this committee look forward to updates and discussion of this work, but its public disclosure is also a duty we owe to New Yorkers, who should always be kept informed of the decisions and plans that will affect their lives. With the administration's new target dates for preliminary and final plan quickly approaching, the time is ripe to discuss progress and hurdles. I also hope to receive updates on Local Law 91 of 2024 in relation to studying the impacts of slavery in New York City and recommending potential reparative measures for resulting harms. And Local Law 92 of 2024 in relation to the creation of a true healing and reconciliation process. Both of these laws were passed with the intent to aid in rectifying past injustices afflicted on Black New Yorkers, the legacies of which we'll be discussing during today's hearing. Thank you to committee staff, finance staff, and my office for their work on this hearing, and thank you to my colleagues who have also joined us today. I'm joined by Councilmember Marte. Councilmember Joseph also has joined us. And then we're also joined by our public advocate. And I will now turn it to our public advocate for some opening remarks.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. As mentioned, my name is Jermaine Williams and a public advocate for the City of New York. Thank you, Chair Williams, and members of the Committee on Civil and Human Rights for holding this hearing and allowing me the opportunity to provide a statement. I also want to say Happy Black History Month irrespective of what our mayor, Donald Trump, I'm sorry, Freudian slip there, President Donald Trump, has to say about it. The past few weeks have been overwhelming with the news cycle bringing constant and conflicting changes to our federal government's policies. More than ever before, it is important that we listen to those who testify today and uplift Black New Yorkers. For nearly five decades, the COVID-19 pandemic exacerbated and exposed the racial inequities that have continued to impact New York City. While all New Yorkers have been impacted, data shows that once again, Black New Yorkers have been hit the hardest socially, economically, and when it comes to the state of health. The systemic marginalization because of the color of the skin cuts across all areas of life at a time when they are feeling particularly vulnerable, we need to hear from administration about plans to address racial inequity viewed through a citywide lens. James Baldwin, one of our greatest New Yorkers, once said, "Anyone who has ever struggled with poverty knows how extremely expensive it is to be poor." It's this cost and continued lack of investment that has put our Black communities in peril. They suffer disproportionately from skyrocketing rent, predatory lending, and increasing evictions. As the costs of basic necessities and rent rapidly increase, we can expect even more New Yorkers facing eviction. In the past two decades, the city's Black population has decreased by almost 200 people. Among Black children and teenagers living in the city, the number declined by 19% from 2010 to 2020. Black families are not leaving because of congestion pricing, but rather they cannot keep up with the cost of what it takes to find decent housing in this city. In light of what's happening in Washington, D.C. with our president and mayor, I guess, executive orders, we should focus on what we can do here in New York City and hold our mayor accountable to the needs of our neighbors. CUNY is an economic driver for New Yorkers, and Adams administration needs to push for full funding to ensure students are safe and able to learn. I look forward to seeing the adoption of restorative justice health centers at all CUNY schools. Another economic driver of our city is 3K and access to affordable local childcare. New York City needs to see a dramatic improvement in the timeline to pay contracts, especially to small daycare centers, and small businesses struggling to stay open because of unreasonable weight on payment for services rendered. In terms of housing, deed theft poses one of the most significant risks to Black homeownership in New York City. I introduce Intro 67, which would require the Department of Finance, Department of HPD, and Consumer and Worker Protection to conduct education and outreach regarding deed fraud and foreclosure prevention assistance fraud. Councilmember Hudson has introduced Intro 888, which would require disclosure of market value for solicited offers to purchase residential properties. And Councilman Ryder's legislation, Intro 901, would require the Office of Financial Empowerment to provide assistance to homeowners, both of which would prevent predatory practices. The same way we work to keep these Black families in their homes, we must ensure access to housing for those who have overrepresented in our legal system. Studies show that justice involved supported housing, or JISH, gives people a better shot at not having interactions with the system. The patterns in the city show Black youth crying out for viable support and programming. One of the most successful approaches to keep these young people from getting into trouble is giving them something to do. Fully funded year-round employment opportunities would help Black families avoid hunger games for few selected spots in the summer. When we talk about healthcare outcomes, one of the strongest examples of racial disparity is maternal health outcomes. As we've seen just this month, racial gaps widened. Black women in the U.S. died at nearly 3.5 times higher than white women around the time of childbirth in 2023. In 2022, I was happy to pass legislation as part of a package of mental maternal health bills. Also, New York City is actually higher than that. With the council, we were ensuring that these rights are upheld, and New Yorkers are empowered to demand what they deserve, making sure that public hospitals are funded with contracts that ensure quality doctors serve patients who are predominantly people of more color, can help address these continued shameful gaps that cost the lives of women. I do want to say my office put out a report a few years ago that showed the places that had the most gun violence, also had the highest COVID deaths, had the most absence in schools, had the highest calls for mental health assistance, and also had the least amount of affordable housing. Yet, we seem to try to solve all of those things by arresting, trying to arrest the children of this generation that we arrested their parents just a generation ago, thinking that's going to solve the problem. I expect the administration to make it clear what their plan is moving forward since they are already behind on schedule for these NYC preliminary city racial equity. I hope during today's hearing, we can work together to create a more equitable and just city for Black New Yorkers. I do want to, just if I can, mention a statement on Black leadership. All of this is happening at a time where we've had more Black leadership than we've ever had in a city, state, and federal government. That means we manage to diversify the leadership but not change the outcomes at the end. And that's a problem that all of us need to hold. I also want to be 100% clear that you can be treated differently, or probably are, if you are in leadership and a Black person. It doesn't change the fact that you might also be doing a lot of foolishness at the same time. Both of those things can be true at the same time. And to be asked to come to the defense of certain Black leadership so they can be treated differently while doing the same foolishness that they should not be mimicking but actually changing is not a good thing for the political will, the political power that we have. We'd be better off using that power to defend Black leadership, trying to do what's better for the community, not what's better for themselves. Just want to make sure that that's on the record. And last, I do want to say anti-Blackness is steeped in this country from the beginning, and we have to be honest about that. And one of the reasons they're trying to erase history is that people think somehow we woke up and everything was all about meritocracy. Lastly, no one is responsible for the system that's born today. None of us, Black, white, brown. But I believe all of us are responsible for the system that we move on to our next generation. In order to move on a better system, we just have to be honest about the system that's here and how we got here. Thank you so much for this hearing. I look forward to hearing some more.
Thank you. And yeah, one of the things you said reminded me of what one of my colleagues said in my program that I was in, and she always talks about how, you know, white supremacy is so pervasive that it doesn't need, you know, a particular ethnicity or race to uphold it, that it is just so deeply embedded into our systems. And so it doesn't really matter, you know, who's in leadership, that the system itself is pervasive in that way. So thank you for being here. Thank you for your testimony. With that, I'll turn it over to...
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say this is the first time I saw your name tag with PhD on it.
Oh, gosh.
That's awesome. That is awesome.
I didn't do that. My office did.
I'm glad you did.
I saw it one day. I was like, why is this here? Okay, with that, I'll turn it over to committee staff to swear in the panel. And thank you so much for being here, Commissioner.
All right. Before we begin testimony, I'll administer the oath. So Commissioner Sherman, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and respond honestly to Councilmember questions?
I do, yes.
All right, go ahead.
Chair Williams, Public Advocate Williams, Councilmember Marte, members of the Committee on Civil and Human Rights, distinguished members of the City Council, and the public, good morning. I am Sidia Sherman, New York City's Chief Equity Officer and Commissioner of the New York City Mayor's Office of Equity and Racial Justice. Thank you for the opportunity to join you today to discuss the state of Black New York and provide an update on the citywide racial equity planning process. As we near the conclusion of Black History Month, it's a fitting moment to reflect on the remarkable progress Black people in our nation have made. Black history is American history. The Black community's century-long struggle for freedom and opportunity is fundamental to our country's evolution, steadily guiding us towards realizing our democratic ideals. I am honored to serve as New York City's First Chief Equity Officer, carrying forward the legacy of those who came before me to ensure that our city is a place of opportunity and access for all. Since our last council hearing, our team has been hard at work advancing the Racial Justice Charter amendments. These historic measures, now embedded in our city charter, give us a clear mission: transform government systems and structure to foster racial equity and justice across New York City. Since launching our office in late 2023, we have worked to stand up our operations while spearheading the citywide racial equity planning process and other crucial work. This is of the utmost importance to us, and we have dedicated the past year to rallying city government behind it and engaging the administration at all levels. Our efforts are unprecedented in scale and ambition. To meet this moment, our team has worked hand-in-hand with over 40 city agencies and 250 staff, conducting full-day training sessions, providing one-on-one technical assistance sessions, and offering ongoing guidance to help agencies develop, refine, and complete preliminary racial equity plans. This measurable plan, which is in its final stages, is designed to drive change across four key areas: budget, programs and policy, contracting, and personnel. By aligning these areas with our unwavering commitment to racial equity, we are setting the stage for transformative, long-lasting change. As we prepare to issue the preliminary citywide racial equity plan in the coming days, we look forward to feedback from the council, our colleagues at the Commission on Racial Equity, and the public. While we advance our forward-looking racial equity planning efforts, we also remain focused on developing programs and initiatives that meet the needs of New Yorkers today. Black New Yorkers have made great strides in our city, but we continue to confront health, economic, and other inequities that can limit opportunities for advancement. Through our New York City Young Men's Initiative and NYC Her Future offices, we are laser-focused on addressing these issues with innovative programs for young people across our city. YMI has long prioritized educational attainment, launching successful programs such as NYC Men's Teach, the CUNY Fatherhood Academy, and Neon Works, which provide education, career training, and credentialing to young people, ranging from those who are the most disconnected from school and work to those completing college and pursuing advanced degrees. YMI has also emphasized literacy, understanding that not only do we want our students to graduate, but we want to ensure that they have the literacy skills they need to succeed. Through initiatives like Sound Partners, Quick Reads, and Raising Readers, we collaborate with over 42 schools to support literacy through family-focused programming, yielding positive results and enhancing students' ability to decode words and read more accurately. NYC Her Future, our new companion office to YMI, has made swift progress since its inception last spring: engaging young people through community-based events, developing new training and career exploration programs, enrolling out targeted initiatives like our DULA training program, which directly contributes to our city's effort to address the crucial issue of Black maternal health. Last year, we proudly partnered with the NYU McSilver Institute to co-host a legislative breakfast on this topic, convening New York City and state-elected officials alongside leaders in academia, health, and maternal health advocates to identify root causes and collaboratively pursue solutions. We thank the council for their partnership in addressing this vital issue. The persistent racial wealth gap continues to hinder progress for Black New Yorkers. Addressing this issue requires access to quality jobs, financial stability, and the asset accumulation necessary for true economic security. From day one, this administration has been focused on affordability, prioritizing affordable housing, jobs, and putting money back in the pockets of New Yorkers. We are particularly proud of our partnership with NYC Kids Rise and New York City Public Schools on the citywide expansion of the Save for College program. Right now, over 280,000 students have NYC scholarship accounts with $42 million invested towards their higher education and career training goals. What's most exciting about this effort is that our city now has the infrastructure to invest collectively, government, private sector, and community in the future of our students. Our office has also focused on advancing place-based initiatives, recently partnering with NICA to invest in a series of programs that support entrepreneurship, career training, and asset building for Bronx-based public housing residents. We are committed to continuing to expand our programmatic efforts, but we acknowledge that programming alone cannot address systemic inequities. This is why our work on the citywide racial equity plan and other structural reform efforts remain central to our mission. As we advance the Racial Justice Charter amendments, we are also collaborating with our colleagues across the government to implement new anti-racism training requirements. Additionally, we are proud to support the implementation of the recently passed Local Law 92, which calls on the city to study reparations and the legacy of slavery. I want to commend you, Chair Williams, and the council for your leadership in advancing this groundbreaking work through last year's Juneteenth legislative package. We look forward to staying engaged with the committee as this work progresses. Thank you for your commitment to creating a fair, just, and equitable city. We share your vision and dedication to building a future where all New Yorkers can thrive. We welcome any questions you may have.
Thank you. And I just wanted to acknowledge that Councilmember Riley has joined us on Zoom. And then we're also joined by Councilmember Stevens, who has been co-chairing efforts that the Black contingency of the council has been pushing forward. So thank you for joining us today. The first question I have is, to what extent does MoERJ engage with the public in its work? For example, do you consult with community leaders and stakeholders on a regular basis to stay up to date with current issues and concerns of the communities impacted by structural inequity and racial injustice? If so, can you give some examples of any Black community-based organizations or groups that you consult or work with?
Sure. So thank you for your question, Councilmember. Our office is not only MoERJ, but it's home to a number of other offices, including the Commission on Gender Equity, the NYC Young Men's Initiative, NYC Her Future, as well as the Unity Project. So as a collaborative, we engage with a number of stakeholders in a variety of ways, from outreach events, engagement events, resource fairs, et cetera. We also convene advisory bodies. So, you know, as part of our racial equity planning process, we've convened an advisory board that includes racial justice leaders as well as folks who've been leaders in government transformation. Through our Commission on Gender Equity, we also have a set of commissioners that help advise our work, which is at the intersection of race and gender and sexual orientation and identity. And so we work in a variety of ways to engage leaders. The other thing that I would point out is that our office, in collaboration with the Civic Engagement Commission, for the last three or four years, has funded neighborhood coalitions across our 33 Tree Equity neighborhoods. So these are community-based coalitions that are really providing, advancing local projects, but also providing the local infrastructure necessary to engage with government. And so as we've gone through this racial equity planning process, we've relied on our partners in the Commission on Racial Equity, who have been engaging the public to share community equity priorities. But the commission has also engaged that network. That's part of the tree network. So there's a variety of ways in which we are connecting to partners and engaging, and we will continue to do so.
Thank you. Would you be able to share like a list of like the nonprofit?
Sure. Yeah, there's a range of groups, including organizations like the NAACP, the groups all across the city.
You don't have to share it now. Like later.
Will say. We'll share that.
Because again, you know, we've been having a lot of like conversations. And one of the things in a conversation that we have had previously is like, well, who are these organizations doing the work? So just for our own personal information, we'd love to know. And I'm sure some of it might be duplicative, but because you're actively engaged in this work, it would be good to just know what are the organizations you're working with. Thank you. Does the agency hold any town halls or public forums in order to engage with the average, everyday New Yorker? If not, are there any plans to do something of this in the future?
Sure. So we haven't had town hall meetings per se, but we certainly have hosted community workshops tied to community-based planning efforts. And as I shared also, we certainly, particularly through our work with the Young Men's Initiative and NYC Her Future, host a number of neighborhood events where we're able to engage and connect people to resources. Some of our recent community engagement workshops include work that we've done in the Bronx to engage residents around addressing specific disparities across the borough. We've hosted borough-wide sessions with nonprofit partners and community members. We've replicated those sessions in Spanish and hosted in-linguage sessions to have hands-on workshops. And we've also replicated that to host sessions that specifically were designed for young people so that they can engage in the work in a way that made sense for them. So that certainly, you know, while we don't have a large community engagement apparatus, we make sure that we're strategic and deliberate in offering and developing opportunities to engage New Yorkers.
Thank you. Do you have any mechanisms to receive direct feedback or suggestions from New Yorkers? And I know Core kind of does some of this work, but just wondering if your office also has a mechanism to receive direct feedback?
Sure. So outside of our website, and when we have distinct engagement efforts, those would be the primary vehicles. As part of the racial equity planning process, as I shared, we certainly have received feedback through the Commission on Racial Equity and their community equity priorities to help inform our planning process. And as we release the preliminary plan, we'll have vehicles for the public to directly share feedback. But we also are encouraging the public to share feedback with Core so that they can also share that with us as part of their process.
Thank you. I know a while ago, CCHR had like released a report on like the state of Black New Yorkers. But I just, you know, I want to know, isn't there a lot of people that know about these reports and things that you all do? Like you spend a lot of time doing this work, and no one knows about it, which is why I wanted to have this hearing because I do appreciate the work that you all do, and I feel like it just kind of flies under the radar. So are you using like social media to engage with New Yorkers, to share the work that you're doing? And if applicable, could you speak to any social media work directed to Black New Yorkers specifically?
So we do use social media to share our work. I will say that most of the work that we've produced, at least in these first three years, have really been focused on, you know, geographic communities, communities of color at large, LGBTQ+ community, a variety of intersecting identities. We also have developed programming opportunities, for instance, during Black History Month to lift up the stories of Black New Yorkers in particular. In terms of how we share our resources, we, again, leverage our website. We leverage social media. And again, through the offices that are part of our umbrella, right? We've also issued a number of reports earlier this year. We issued, through the Commission on Gender Equity, a guide to NYC students to understand their period, for instance. Most recently, we, through CGE, issued a number of one-pagers so that New Yorkers can understand economic mobility, or health equity, or a number of issues. We are always certainly looking for new avenues to ensure that that information is reaching the public, right? So this is why we also partner with agencies like CCHR to make sure that we're getting the word out and joining resource fairs. And we'll continue to look for more avenues to make sure that we're reaching New Yorkers.
Thank you. I'll pause. I know my colleagues are like busy. I don't know if you guys have any questions. Councilmember Stevens, you have questions? I know. Since he's a public advocate, I guess he'll go first. Go ahead.
Thank you. It's actually another question, a comment. Just thank you for all the work that you're doing. Hopefully, we can find more ways, as the chair said, to get that out to the public. I also just wanted to put on the record, so if my kids ever listen to this, they also hear the Black joy part. So even through all of this, the community is still able to find joy. And as my kids are growing, I want to make sure they hear that part as well. And many people are thriving, but it is, to be honest, they're thriving in spite of what was put in place, not because of what was put in place. I just want to make sure I put that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Chair. Dr. Williams, I really appreciate you taking on this topic and bringing this to the forefront, and thank you for being here with us. Like the chair said earlier, I've been working with the BLACK, which is a subcommittee of the Black Hawk BLAC, which is the Black delegation of city council to really talk about our issues and how do we move forward. And so one, I think my first question with you is like, how can we work together more closely around some of the work that you're doing as far as like some of the reports and things like that so we can be working more in tandem and supporting your work in a much different way?
Sure, Councilmember. And I know that I met with you very early in the administration, so glad to reconnect, and would definitely love to work more closely and intentionally with you. So as we release, you know, our work and some of the reports that are going forth, it would be great to brief your office, to find areas of opportunity and collaboration. I also know that you have a particular focus on young people, and we've recently rolled out a lot of initiatives that are very focused on young New Yorkers and would love to engage you in that and just work more closely. So I would gladly reach out to your office and figure out ways, concrete ways, that we can do work together.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. And I guess the other question I had, and I'm sure Dr. Williams is going to get to it, but just thinking about with the threat of a lot of the issues around the federal government, DEI being under attack, and just thinking about how that's going to impact your work. Can you talk about a little bit of like how you've been preparing for that? And then what's the status of what's going on with your office currently?
Sure. So, you know, our values in New York City remain. This is a city that embraces diversity. We believe strongly in equity, right? And fairness and inclusion. And the work that we do, particularly as outlined in the charter, continues. And so we are steadfast in continuing to do this work. Obviously, we're monitoring what's happening at the national level. And even prior, right, this work was certainly being challenged and threatened prior to even this administration. And so we're doing what we need to do to ensure that we safeguard the work, right? But still pushing it forward so that we're meeting the commitment that we've made to New Yorkers and improving the lives of New Yorkers.
Yes, thank you so much. I know it's difficult times, and it makes the work that you guys are doing harder, which means we have to give you guys some more support and more staff and more funding because I think more than ever, the work that you're doing is necessary and important. So thank you, Chair, who's always championed this work and really has pushed to the forefront the importance of the work and how the things that we're doing on the council is supported by your work, and we need to make sure we're supporting it as well. So thank you so much for being here, and I look forward to talking offline and meeting and working with you in the future.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you, Councilmember Chair Stevens. And I just wanted to like echo something that she said, and I know I said it to you offline too, that, you know, I for sure want to be supportive. And a part of why, like, I really wanted to have this hearing is because I think it's so important for us to continue to have these conversations. is because I think it's so important for us to continue to have these conversations, even if things are imperfect or a little messy, just so New Yorkers know from both sides of City Hall that there is a focus and an interest in, you know, improving the lives of, of Black New Yorkers. And, you know, if our colleague, Councilmember Hudson, was here, she would say this line that I feel like we've all adopted, that, you know, focusing on Black New Yorkers is, it's an inclusive plan. You know, because if, if Black New Yorkers are good, everybody else benefits from that. So, this is, of course, not just solely about Black New Yorkers, but if we, as a city, are addressing the needs that Black New Yorkers have, everyone will benefit from that. And so, this is an inclusive plan that, that really serves the most marginalized in our city. So, we, again, we want to support you and the work that you're doing and appreciate you being here. So, you have, your hands are really full. You have tons of commissions and working groups and task forces and multi-agency bodies, such as the Commission on Women in Gender Equity, New York City Her Future, New York City Pay Equity Cabinet, just to name a few. And so, given that you often take an intersectional approach to your work and these entities cover varying demographics, to what extent do these entities work together to advance your work overall?
Great question. Thank you, Councilmember. So, one of the, the vision of bringing these offices together within this administration was to really make sure that there was an intersectional approach to equity. And so, over the past two-plus years, as we've been leading this work and standing up our office, we also have been working to make sure that those teams have leadership in place. I'm really excited that we now have executive directors across almost all of our offices, and we soon will have one for the Commission on Gender Equity. And all of the executive directors of those offices report to me. We all work regularly together on a weekly basis, or, you know, a bi-weekly basis, everyone's meeting. We share resources across our team. Folks weigh in on each other's work, right? So, we're ensuring that, as we're serving New Yorkers and we're working on our racial equity planning efforts, we're factoring in the whole person, right? From their sexual orientation and identity, to their gender, to their age, right, to the community that they live in, and really bringing in the expertise of our colleagues across those areas.
Thank you. So, I wanted to talk a little bit about Tree. Could you speak more about the ongoing work of Tree, including any name, titles, affiliated organizations for task members, and if any current plan exists to expand Tree?
Sure. So, the Task Force on Racial Inclusion and Equity, was previously started during the pandemic. I had the honor of leading Tree at that time. And it was really formed in response to the disparities that we saw during COVID. At that time, we've developed and have continued to develop a set of priority neighborhoods. And these priority neighborhoods all have these neighborhood coalitions, which I referenced earlier, and happy to share a name of those groups. Internally, however, Tree is very focused on city government itself. And so, through the Task Force, we bring together city agency designees to really focus on more real-time issues, programs, activities, initiatives. As I shared earlier, a lot of our work within this administration has been focused on the Bronx with the recognition that of our priority neighborhoods, the majority of zip codes are concentrated within the borough. This is why we've had community engagement in the borough. We were able to invest in some new programs last year focused on Bronx residents. And we're looking to roll out more, really, support to address some of the disparities we see in the borough. But the work of Tree is still citywide, right? The neighborhood coalitions cover all 33 communities. And as we, you know, look to move forward with our racial equity planning work, you'll see that many agencies are also prioritizing these communities within their work.
Thank you. So, it is my understanding that there has been three Bronx community engagement workshops so far. Are there any plans to hold similar workshops across other boroughs? Is there an expected timeline for the development and rollout of these workshops?
So, our goal is to actually go back to the Bronx and share a readout of where we are based on their feedback and based on the feedback that we have internally. Obviously, we also have been working on the city racial equity plan at the same time. There's significant overlap between the agencies that are represented in Tree and the individuals, as well as the racial equity planning process. So, we certainly have prioritized the, the plan and intend to go back to those same community groups, share a report out of what we heard, share some of the early initiatives that we're able to fund and support, and then work in partnership with them to try to lift up some of the other recommendations and priorities. We certainly, right, would love to replicate that process across other boroughs as we have additional capacity. But again, you know, the, the planning work that we do also serves as a vehicle for us to concentrate efforts across neighborhoods.
Okay, yeah. And you just, you just said a word I was thinking about. You said overlap, and I was thinking like, is, is there some duplicity here? There's, it's like your office, which is like a catchment, but then it's Core, and then it's Tree. It does seem like there's like a level of overlap or perhaps duplicity. So, how are you ensuring either like coordination? Or, you know, if this, this entity is doing this, maybe this entity can do that to maximize the limited resources you do have versus sort of everyone on top of each other doing the same work or saving, serving the same demographics? So, like, how, how do you account for that? How do you address that? How are you seeking to like streamline and, you know, eliminate any overlap?
Absolutely. So, one of the areas of overlap, just in terms of composition, not necessarily mission, is the, the composition of our racial equity planning teams, right? The agency partners who work on the planning process and those who also may be designees to the Task Force on Racial Inclusion Equity. And so, we want to create some efficiency there and try to ensure that as agencies move towards implementation that there's alignment with the work of Tree so that we're as effective as possible. We obviously also collaborate with the Commission on Racial Equity, which, you know, has a very external-facing presence, right, and works across a number of communities to ensure that we're not duplicating efforts and that, you know, to the extent Core is getting feedback that's important for us to know, that we're leveraging the information that they have.
Thank you. Can you please share any preliminary recommendations that M O E R J has made to relevant agencies based on information and feedback gathered from workshops? Did any directives accompany these recommendations? And/or will agencies be required to report in any way on these preliminary recommendations?
This is with respect to the Bronx engagement process?
Yeah.
Okay, sure.
Workshops.
So, and just to give a big picture, those workshops were really focused on specific issue areas and then potentials programmatic solutions. And so, some of the, the recommendations that resonated, for instance, included, sorry, I'm sorry, Councilmember. Oh, so, so some of the recommendations that resonated, for instance, in our workshops included interest in entrepreneurship programs. People wanted opportunities to build assets, for instance. So, that's why I shared some of the early programs that we were more immediately able to invest in right after workshop discussions, were some of the investments in NYCHA, right? So, which has obviously a deep concentration in the Bronx. So, there's new career track apprenticeship training rolling out. There is an expansion of an entrepreneurship program focused on Bronx residents in the borough. And we're also working to expand an asset-building program that the agency has. That's just one example. But where there are recommendations that align with existing agency programs or initiatives, we've worked to be able to resource those to the extent that we can. And then certainly look to go back to the community to figure out how we lift some of the bigger ideas.
Okay. Just like another follow-up question on like capacity. I mean, obviously, I'm sure if you had all the money in the world and all the staff in the world, you can do all the things. But is there some thinking or, you know, strategic, future strategic planning around like how to scale into other areas? Like, is there thinking around that? Or is this like not really a thought because you don't have the resources to do it? I'm just wondering internally, is there some thought being put behind? How can you enter into other communities that might fit the same level of, of priority?
Absolutely. So, I mean, there's, there are ways in which, again, as we recontinue to work with the Task Force and reconvene our efforts, there's ways in which we can replicate that process in other communities. But that can really leverage a lot from what the city's already doing. So, in the example that I shared, our partners have been H P D and C C H R, who also have a strong community engagement team and presence, right? And so, there's ways that we can scale this work, leveraging our agency partners, right? We assess our, our needs every year. And so, as, if we see that there are needs down the line for Tree to continue to grow its work, we absolutely, you know, will, will try to advocate for those. But there's also a lot of leverage, because it's a task force by nature. And so, it does require that agencies are also bringing their resources to bear in the work.
So, that said, like, are there any thoughts to dismantle Tree?
Absolutely not. So...
I'm like, I don't want to, I don't know. It's just like, what, what are you guys actually doing?
Yeah, so, absolutely not. I would, you know, Tree is different from the, the long-term planning work that we're doing, right? It is bringing together city agencies to focus on issue area, right? Engaging community as we have, and then moving forward with solutions. So, the examples that I shared with the programs that we invested in in the last budget, that is a result of that work. And that is typically how Tree has worked in the past. Bringing people together around issue areas or around a specific community and bringing agencies together just to deploy solutions. And so, that work is critical. I would also add that the work on the ground through Tree, which is happening through the community-based coalitions, is also critical. And we, not only do we support that work, right? It is the infrastructure that is, that is necessary to ensure that communities are able to really effectively engage with government. That, that work came out of the Task Force. It's a result of Tree, right? And it's unique in the sense that the city is actually really funding groups to come together, right? Which is not typical with the way in which the city funds work. We're funding groups to come together, to build their capacity, to operate as coalitions. And that's really, really important work in terms of ensuring that communities have the, the networks that they need to engage with the city effectively.
Is that information public? Like, this community coalition that you have in the Bronx?
Yeah, sure.
So, like, I could go on the website and see?
Yeah, we can send you the list of coalition members, as well as, I mean, we've had releases and other information about the, the networks as well.
Okay. So, you said the issue area was like primarily around entrepreneurship and asset?
What I'm saying is, that's just one issue area that came up in, I'm giving an example of an issue area that came up in one of our community workshops that we, by virtue of having that, right, were able to more immediately respond to within the budget.
So, can you give me some more details on like what you actually did? So, like, oh, we want to do entrepreneurship. So, then what did you do?
Sure. So, in the example that I shared, our office invested a million dollars, near a million dollars, in Bronx-based programs focused on public housing residents. There are three programs. One will provide career apprenticeship training with access to unions for residents in the borough. Another program will support NYCHA residents who are food-based entrepreneurs in the borough to really be able to grow and scale their business and also obtain the licensing that they need to do their work. And another program will support expansion of the Family Self-Sufficiency Program, which allows residents to sort of use their, their, as they increase their assets due to participation in the program, as they increase their income due to participation in the program, the difference between their old rent and their new rent is saved in an escrow account that they then are able to sort of cash out when they reach their goals. And so, the funding that we're providing is to provide the technical assistance to increase the number of residents who have at least 10,000 in assets through the program. So, those are just three examples of programs that sort of came, program expansions, right, that came out of those community sessions.
And you're going to send me a list? So, the, the, the community coalition organizations, are the organizations that received this one million dollars? Or was there a specific organization? Is that money being allocated to an agency who's actually doing the work?
So, we allocate that, so, sorry, let me just separate the two. So, there's funding that we allocate for the community coalitions. That goes to the Civic Engagement Commission, which then works with the coalitions. The funding that I reference in respect to this program is funding that we allocate it to the Housing Authority to then write subcontract out or directly manage those, those three programs that I, those three program examples.
Okay. How much other money have you allocated? So, there's one for, I guess, like just the building of the coalition. And then you gave one example of like a tangible thing that came out of a workshop, like, okay, here's a million dollars to talk about self-sufficiency, jobs, helping you support your businesses. Are there any other initiatives or money that has been allocated to things that have come out of the workshops?
At this time, no, right? So, those are some of the early examples. Our goal is to go back to the community with all the recommendations that we have and be able to move forward with bigger resource allocations. As I mentioned though, there are also, and as we release the plan, there are agencies that are also prioritizing certain Tree neighborhoods, right? Certain geographic areas that are consistent with many of the recommendations that we heard.
Okay. So, this is the duplicity you mentioned. So, as you build out the racial equity plan, some stuff that you might have learned might be addressed through the racial equity plan in process?
And there's alignment, yeah. So, the goals still also have alignment.
Okay. A lot of your work is meant to target discrimination and racism at a structural and systemic level. According to the Poverty Tracker, developed by the Center on Poverty and Social Policy and Robberhood, nearly 80% of Black New Yorkers report facing at least one form of institutional discrimination in their lifetime, such as when we're trying to vote, renting an apartment, or when applying for jobs and promotions. Does your office collect or receive any data similar to this from New York City agencies across the spectrum or any other entities? Does it do any of this on its own, through independent data collection, on institutional discrimination? If so, could you share how such data is digested and used in your work?
So, we don't collect individual data on discrimination. Most of that information, to the extent that people are reporting it, goes to C C H R or the State Commission on Human Rights, depending on how people report. We certainly stay abreast of what's happening in our city and as well as we work closely with our, our partners to understand changes to the law with respect to human rights law. New York obviously has, you know, very generous human rights law with a number of protections, but we don't collect that data directly.
Okay. The oversight role of government agencies over the private sector can often be very limited. That being said, according to the Department of Labor, there are roughly 4.2 million New York City residents employed in the private sector as of December 2024, which is an increase of about 77,000 from the previous year. Given the significant and rising number, how is M O E R J working to advance toward its goal within private, within the private sector, if at all possible?
So, our work has been primarily focused on government in reforming, in advancing racial equity through government reform. To the, again, to the extent that people in the private sector are experiencing discrimination, the city obviously has resources. And we've also raised awareness in partnership with private sector partners around critical issues that cut across government, like pay equity. But we don't have a direct role in oversight of the private sector. But certainly, as our work evolves, can ensure that we're leveraging and engaging the, the sector and also sort of sharing some of the best practices that we develop within government.
Thank you. Access to healthcare has become like one of the biggest issues cited as a byproduct of systemic inequity. Could you tell us about any of the work you are doing with the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene or the Department of Health? Is there any opportunities for M O E R J to provide feedback or guidance on how our hospitals and healthcare facilities could better consider low-income New Yorkers of color when making reforms or improvements in their practices and policies? I know you referenced the session you did with Mixover, but, you know, are there any other things that you're doing? And again, is, is there any guidance, feedback, recommendations you can share on that today?
Gladly. So, we work closely with the Department of Health. Golly. So we work closely with the Department of Health. They're really a great partner and also a leader in this work. We, you know, have been part of the interagency committees that have supported the Chronic Disease Prevention Plan as well as some of the other interagency planning work that the Department of Health has underway, including their maternal health efforts. The programming that I mentioned, our DULA certification programming is also operated in partnership with the Department of Health. There's also funding that we've allocated to the Department of Health to support some of our LGBTQ plus programming, as well as funding that we've been able to allocate to health and hospitals, particularly around LGBTQ plus programming and supporting the renovation of the Judson Health Clinic and ensuring that there's robust programming there. So we work pretty closely with with our health partners and certainly understand there's a real core intersection of health equity and racial inequity.
Okay, now turning to racial equity planning. The timeline on your website states a preliminary citywide racial equity plan is expected to be finalized by this March, with updates and a final plan expected to be released by this coming June. Does MOERJ feel as if it is, I guess, back on track to meet these targets? These target dates? If not, could you speak more on the needs of your agency in order to meet these target dates?
So thank you, Councilmember, and I know this is of important interest to you. So we are on track and we are working steadily as we speak to release the plan based on that timeline that is shared. And so we look forward to to engaging you once we release the plan and keeping you abreast of our progress.
Thank you. How will the administration ensure that any delays will not impact the fiscal year 2026 budget process?
So based on our timeline for release, there's still an opportunity for the city to factor the plan into, the preliminary plan into exact. Additionally, agencies are lifting up priorities that may already be funded as well as resource allocation within their agency, particularly for their their goals that extend between '26 and '28, which are usually pretty short-term goals. And so there's still an opportunity for the plan to to influence the city budget. One thing that I would also flag is, you know, the, obviously, the new needs are just really a fraction of the city budget. And so that we've gone through this process, we've also worked with agencies to think about how they're allocating their existing needs, their existing resources, right, as part of an effort towards structural reform to make sure that it's in alignment with their goals.
What steps will MOERJ take to ensure that community feedback during the two-month review process will be incorporated into the final racial equity plan?
So once we release the racial equity plan, the public has an opportunity. There is a 30-day window for feedback. As I shared, we'll have an opportunity for the public to share that feedback directly with us, the Commission on Racial Equity. And I don't want to speak to their work, but I know that they will also be sharing feedback, right? And engaging their commissioners and the public, and we encourage New Yorkers to engage with them as well. And then, of course, we're looking for feedback from the council and other elected officials in the city. Once we have that feedback, there is then approximately around two and a half months that the city has to incorporate it and to work on an updated final plan. And so we will, as we get that information, you know, we'll stay in dialogue with with our partners to make sure that we understand it and that we're incorporating it and factoring it into what goes into the final plan.
Okay, thank you. Will the council have any opportunities to also engage in this process? So, I mean, obviously, it's really important for the administration to share this information up and down throughout the admin, certainly to OMB. But again, as as council members, I know some of my colleagues, I know I'm really interested in this stuff and would love to engage in the process. So just wondering if you all have factored in any ways for the council to engage in the process?
Absolutely. And so once we complete the preliminary plan, and I know this is of particular interest and you have, you know, significant expertise in this area, we'd love to brief you, brief the committee, have an opportunity to talk through the plan in more detail, gain your feedback. And as we work on the final, we'll certainly keep you abreast as well.
Thank you. Has Tree had any involvement in the racial equity planning process? I mean, I feel like we kind of discussed this, but it would be good to know if there has been like any official involvement or is it just pulling from what you learn there and sort of cross-referencing where you need?
Sure, I'll say there's two vehicles. So in terms of the composition of Tree internally, right, city agency staff, as I mentioned, many of the designees overlap with those who are also the designees. Many of the people who are designees for Tree are also designees for their agency's racial equity planning process. However, externally, the community-based coalitions that are part of the Tree Neighborhood Network, as part of the Commission on Racial Equity's work, they have engaged those those network members as well in developing their community priorities in addition to many other New Yorkers. And so there has been points of intersection. And, you know, I think as we continue to move this work further, we'll, we're looking to bring even more alignment.
Thank you. What steps has the administration taken? And does it plan to take in the future to ensure that agency spending reflects racial equity priorities and that agencies continue to cooperate effectively with your office?
So we're producing what is a measurable plan, right? There are goals, outcomes, indicators, and that it will be the way in which we ensure that the plan is implemented and there are accountability systems in place. As I shared, many agencies are certainly identifying, you know, programs that may be funded, but they also are focusing on how they allocate their existing resources to effectuate their goals. And so there will be constant updates and alignment as we, you know, the cities will sort of consistently be in a planning cycle for the foreseeable future between progress reports and planning. So there's opportunity for constant adjustment and realignment based on the way the process is structured, too.
Yeah, this, that, this question right here is probably like my number one concern because I see it with, you know, CCHR, I see it with EEPC. You know, we just had a hearing yesterday where DOI was here. It's like these, maybe because you're like a mayoral kind of body, it's a little different than some of these sort of independent type of bodies or like sister agencies that aren't as big as the NYPD in terms of the the respect indifference level, I feel, that happens across the administration. And so my biggest concern is that you'll do all this work and there's no teeth behind it. And like agencies that need to like take action to fulfill on this measurable plan won't actually take action and there's no way to truly hold them accountable. So I, you know, I would say that's like my biggest concern is ensuring that, you know, whether it's you or Core or whomever, like you have enough respect to be able to, you know, hold whomever accountable, even if it's OMB, to delivering on the things that come out of these plans because it's kind of pointless for you to craft these plans and no other agency does anything about it and you can't hold them accountable to it. So that's, this is, this is like my number one concern about all of this stuff is the agencies actually making change. And I've seen, again, you know, with the the Fire Department in particular. I mean, they really have not made any substantive changes and it's why the city is like actively in a lawsuit. So anyway, I hope that you have the the authority and teeth that you need and whatever respective task forces and committees and commissions under you have the same. Because I I've seen countless times how agencies don't really comply and there's nothing really you can do to get that agency to comply. And, you know, the crux of this is talking about systems. And these systems exist with or without us, but it calls for us to like force change. And I just, I'm like really concerned about the the strength of these inequitable systems, recreating themselves in perpetuity, just in in different names and different ways.
Would you like me to?
Sure.
To the council member?
You can respond to my TED Talk.
No, no, I appreciate your, what you shared and I certainly share your sentiment. We've been clear from the start of this process that this is not just a compliance exercise, right? If it were, we would have put out a plan months ago. The goal is to ensure that this is truly a transformative plan. And to do that, we've done the groundwork, right, to really rally support across all levels of the administration. This started with a directive from the mayor to agencies to meaningfully engage in this process. All city leadership has been engaged in this process. Agencies have been really thoughtful and intentional in creating their plans. They're serious about them. And we've built the infrastructure now, as we've been building our office, to ensure that we have the the systems that we need to ensure accountability. We now have a fully-staffed racial equity planning team. So that includes not only our planning, our Director of Equity Planning and Technical Assistance, but also 10 equity planning managers that have agency portfolios that will be working hand-in-hand with agencies throughout implementation. We also have been working to set up the systems that we need to track and ensure that there's there's progress. There's also public reporting as part of this process, so we will obviously share progress reports with the public. And then obviously, there's other means for public accountability through the work of Core, through the work of the City Council. And so we we take this work very seriously. And part of my goal is to ensure that as we build this team, as we build this inaugural plan, that the infrastructure lasts, right, beyond me, beyond any other chief equity officer, so that it remains prominent and central within city government.
Yes, and I do not doubt that you take it serious. I know you take it serious. I'm talking about like the other agencies and people that have been in government for multiple decades that have like adopted like that behaviors or, you know, essentially become a part of the system that don't care about racial equity. And I I just want to make sure they take it serious. Like, I'm very clear that you and your team, y'all take it serious. I'm concerned about the other people that don't take it serious, that it's not a priority for them. Can you just tell me, like, how many people are on the racial equity planning team? You said 10 and then a data person, so 11 people altogether?
So we have 10 equity planning managers and a Director of Equity Planning, who all report to our Deputy Commissioner. We also have a Senior Advisor who's supporting policy, some planning work as well.
Okay. Do you think that's enough?
I think that, I I think that based on the way in which we are developing and rolling out the work, I think that that is a a sound structure. I would add that that's not to sum total of our team, right? We, you know, have a communications team, we have an administrative team, we have Chief of Staff for bringing on a General Counsel, right? Everybody plays a role in this work. But for the team that are really the sort of tip of the arrow that are working with agencies day-to-day, this is, you know, what we believe to be a a good infrastructure. Obviously, we, you know, will continue to assess our needs annually and also assess them as the, as we, you know, start to implement the first plan.
Where are y'all located? Like, where is your office located?
We are right across the street at 253.
Do you have enough space? That's like, it seems like you like ramped up with a lot of people.
We have ramped up. That's a great question, Councilmember.
Say people need space to work well.
Outgrowing our space and we are in conversations with DCAS, our partners who are working with us to ensure that we can find space that meets our needs.
Yeah, okay. Well, keep us posted. I just, I don't know, maybe it's just me. I mean, I'm the only one here. Just, I don't, I don't want to like tucked away in a corner and not have like the resources and and like just physical space to do the work you need to do. So many city agencies are required to submit a preliminary mayor's management report. And it includes indicators that they use to track their work. Have you or will you provide any advice to these agencies as to indicators they could add to track if they are reflecting racial equity priorities? So, you know, that is like, are you thinking about how to incorporate racial equity into these other like structures and documents that these various agencies produce on a a regular cadence?
Absolutely. So that's certainly a goal and where we want to get long-term, bringing more integration between those two reports. One thing I will share is, as part of this process, we've also been able to engage the Mayor's Office of Operation, who manages the Mayor's Management Report. They joined all of our training with trainings with the racial equity planning teams and gave a really wonderful training on developing indicators and outcomes. And we've also worked to build some consistency between the indicators that are in the racial equity plan and the indicators that are in the MMR, right? So that there's not only streamlined reporting for agencies, but so that New Yorkers can sort of see the big picture.
Okay, so you talked about how you've expanded the team on the racial equity side in general, overall. Are you currently engaged in any process to expand your staff? If so, could you share any information in regards to the number of openings, titles, any other hiring timelines?
Sure. So we, our head count is 37 within our MOERJ budget. That does not include the Commission on Racial, the Commission on Gender Equity and the Young Men's Initiative. So just within our overarching MOERJ budget, we are at 37. Head count, we have 25 positions filled. We have three candidates who are in the pipeline as we speak, who hopefully will be onboarded soon for roles. And we have 10 positions that are still in the hiring phase. So somewhere between interviews, offers. And so our goal is to complete all of our hiring by the end of this fiscal year.
Thank you. That is all my questions. Let me double check. I think I have for you, and I just want to reiterate my support for your work and I look forward to working with your office to advance the racial equity plan, to consider it and bring it up in upcoming hearings, budget hearings. And yeah, just want to make things better for Black New Yorkers and marginalized groups in our city. So thank you for being here and I appreciate the work that you're doing.
Thank you, Councilmember, and thank you for your commitment to this work.
Next we'll be hearing from Chair and Executive Director of the Commission on Racial Equity, Linda Tegani. All right, Chair, and I'll swear you in. So please raise your right hand. Do you swear to affirm, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and respond honestly to Councilmember questions?
I do.
You may begin.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair, Dr. Natasha Williams, and members of the Civil and Human Rights Committee. My name is Linda Tegani and I have the honor of serving as the Chair and Executive Director for the New York City Commission on Racial Equity. I lead CORE in partnership with 14 commissioners and 10 staff members. Today, I would like to provide an overview of the role of CORE in the racial equity planning process with a focus on our efforts in the 2024 racial equity planning cycle. I would also like you, I would also like to thank you for hosting this hearing during Black History Month, a month where we are celebrating the history of our ancestors while also recognizing that we have a long way to go. The Commission, excuse me, the New York City Commission on Racial Equity was established through the November 2022 vote to hold New York City government accountable to advance racial equity in government operations and increase community voice in government decision-making. Three of our five charter mandates speak to our role in the racial equity planning process. First, our commission must identify and propose community equity priorities and outcome indicators relevant to the well-being of members for possible inclusion in the citywide and agency racial equity plans in accordance with the equity planning schedule. Second, following the release of preliminary and final citywide racial equity plans, the commission shall make a public statement assessing the extent to which the plan is responsive to community equity priorities and to make recommendations on strategy, indicators, and goals set forth in the plan. Third, CORE will track and publicly report on the agency and citywide compliance with the racial equity planning process. Government agencies must be held accountable to the racial equity planning process and timeline outlined in Chapter 78 of the New York City Charter. The city's racial equity planning process, set to occur biannually starting calendar year 2023, begins with CORE submission of community equity priorities and indicators due October 1st. Due to significant delay in my hiring, CORE missed the first deadline, thereby pushing back the launch of the process by eight months. According to the Charter, the Chair and Executive Director and all Commissions should have been in place no later than August 1st of 2023. My first day was October 11th of 2023. The commission was not fully appointed until October 30th of 2024. Once I came on board, I hired a team of six staff members and supported elected officials to complete their appointments to the commission. The second CORE staff member did not join until March of 2024. Simultaneously, I worked closely with the Mayor's Office of Equity and Racial Justice, also known as MOERJ, to develop a revised timeline for the 2024 racial equity planning cycle, which was shared with the public via the MOERJ website. Commissioners Sadia Sherman of MOERJ and I agreed to the release of a preliminary racial equity plan no later than October 31st, 2024, and a final plan no later than December 24, sorry, December 2024. As of today, the plans are 112 days late from the October 31st deadline and 399 days late from the original date in the Charter. As a result of this delay, the fiscal year 2026 budgeting cycle has launched without the necessary guidance racial equity plans should provide to understanding the changes in investment strategy the city will take to ameliorate racial and social injustice. I would like to now provide an overview of the work CORE has done to move forward the 2024 racial equity planning process. The city's racial equity planning process begins with CORE submission of the community equity priorities and indicators. As defined in the Charter, community equity priorities and indicators, quote, "Consider those needs and priorities that local community members view as most relevant to..." as most relevant to their well-being, giving particular consideration to the priorities of groups or categories of community members that have been historically underrepresented in or underserved by government and its process." We refer to these groups or categories of communities as communities harmed by racism and social injustice. In November of 2023, CORE began drafting community equity priorities and speaking with partners across government and the public to ensure that community voices informed CORE's work early and in every stage of the process. CORE is committed to ensuring communities harmed by racism and social injustice inform and guide all of our work. On May thirteenth, CORE released sixteen draft community equity priorities to city agencies and the public. Prior to public release, CORE received feedback on the draft priorities from twenty-one community-based organizations participating in the Task Force on Racial Equity and Inclusion Neighborhood Network Initiative and the New York City Participatory Budgeting Program. Priorities were also shared with the Mayor's Office of Equity and Racial Justice, as well as the Deputy Mayor for Strategic Initiatives, Anna Almazar. On May thirteen, 2024, CORE presented the sixteen draft community equity priorities at the racial equity planning training. We shared draft language, examples on how agencies can operationalize these priorities in their forthcoming plan, and strongly recommended that each agency identify at least one priority in each fundamental value that they would respond to in their plan. Community equity priorities were released in draft form so that CORE can solicit feedback from community organizations on the themes presented, add themes they felt may be missing, and provide edits to the language. Both the public and government partners were able to provide feedback through any of the following avenues: an online survey available in twelve languages, public testimony via email, host a CEP or Community Equity Priority Community Conversation led by a community member, or invite CORE to lead a CEP community conversation. We collected feedback from May through August of 2024. At the close of the inaugural engagement campaign, sixteen community equity priorities were finalized and we added two new community equity priorities, all of which are reflected in the final two pages of the testimony. Throughout our engagement, CORE worked with community to better understand and identify who are the communities harmed by racism and social injustice. The New York City Charter identifies following groups as marginalized: Black, Indigenous, Latinx, Asian, Pacific Islander, Middle Eastern, and other people of color, women, religious minorities, immigrants, and people who are LGBTQ+ and people with disabilities. Community members shared that they want CORE to include the following groups to receive particular consideration: youth, elders, people who are incarcerated, and people who are unhoused. Additionally, they requested that Middle Eastern category be extended to include North African and LGBTQ+ be extended to include intersex and asexual. I would like to take this opportunity to highlight that the New York City Charter, our city constitution, upholds the LGBTQ+IA community as one that has experienced racism and discrimination. The Charter calls on us as government to stand firm in our support and protection for the rights of the LGBTQIA+ community, including their right to safety, prosperity, and their right to receiving gender-affirming care from New York City government and government contractors. Our organizing and engagement practice strives to center communities harmed by racism and social injustice. Over a four-month period, CORE received feedback from four thousand two hundred and twelve respondents. We partnered with forty-two organizations across five boroughs, which yielded two hundred and twenty CEP community conversations. In total, CORE spent four hundred and ten thousand dollars on the first cycle of community organizing and engagement, three hundred and ninety thousand dollars went to community organizations, and twenty thousand dollars in administrative costs. Now, I would like to highlight the diversity of our respondent pool, which we believe is why community equity priorities are in fact reflective of the New York City population. Out of four thousand two hundred and twelve respondents, thirty-five point five percent identified as Black or African-American, twenty point six percent identified as Hispanic or Latinx, ten point two percent identified as Asian-American, five point eight identified as white, and five point seven percent identified as multiracial. Less than one percent of respondents identified in each of the following categories: Middle Eastern, North African, American Indian or Alaskan, adopted or unknown and Native Hawaiian or Pacific Islander. With respect to diversity of age, eight percent of respondents are between ten to seventeen years old, twenty-one point three percent are under the age of twenty-five, seventy-eight point seven percent were twenty-five years or older, seventeen point four percent are over the age of sixty-five, and eighty-six point two percent are under the age of sixty-five. Women made up fifty-five point seven percent of our respondents, men made up twenty-one point seven percent, and less than one percent of respondents identified as non-binary, gender queer, trans man, trans woman, agender, or multiple genders. Respondents reflected a diversity of educational experience as well as disability and chronic conditions. With respect to diversity of education, seventeen point eight percent of respondents' highest level of education was twelfth grade, seventeen point six percent reported having a high school graduate or similar degree, twelve point eight percent reported some college, eleven point five percent reported having a bachelor's degree, ten point three percent reported having a postgraduate degree, and five point three percent reported having an associate or trade school degree. Upwards of forty-six point four percent of respondents stated that they have either a disability or chronic condition. We offered respondents the opportunity to share if they were multilingual and their ancestry and ethnic origin. Respondents' ancestry included but not limited to Caribbean, Chinese, Lebanese, Central European Jewish, and Filipino. The preferred language of respondents includes but is not limited to Arabic, Cantonese, Urdu, and Wolof. Bronx respondents made up twenty-three point five percent of the respondent pool, followed by Brooklyn at twenty-two point four percent, Queens, excuse me, Queens at fifteen point two percent, and Staten Island at eight percent. The Task Force on Racial Equity and Inclusion Neighborhoods made up fifty-eight point three percent of the total response pool. All questions were voluntary and respondents were provided the option, preferred not to answer. CORE organizing and engagement practices center diversity, equity, and inclusion to hold New York City government accountable towards becoming a multiracial democracy. We used a Likert scale, which asks respondents to identify their level of agreement or disagreement with the proposed priority and open-ended questions. Respondents shared additional requests, including but not limited to a call for reparations, lowering the cost of living, ensuring students with individualized education plans receive their services on time, and increased childcare supports. Over eighty percent of community members agreed with thirteen of the draft community equity priorities and sixty-eight to seventy-eight percent agreed with three draft community equity priorities. CORE worked with the Institute for State and Local Governance to analyze four thousand two hundred and twelve Likert scale responses and one thousand five hundred open-end responses. To support the developing racial equity plan, CORE led briefings on what we heard from community. Two internal briefings were conducted for racial equity planners representing city agencies responsible for drafting plans. We held two public virtual shareouts for interested members of the public, which was also open to government staff. For more information on our virtual shareout, please see our recorded session available for the public via our YouTube page at Commission on Racial Equity. Following our briefings, CORE drafted updated CEP language for the commissioners to workshop with, to workshop with the public prior to finalizing. In addition to four thousand two hundred and twelve responses, CORE produced sixteen draft community equity priority data profiles to provide a baseline understanding of each priority using publicly available data. We have begun assembling existing data and data that offers insights into the historical and current inequities. Profiles can also be found on our website at nyc.gov backslash CORE. The information provided was used by CORE's commissioners to make final edits to the language and vote to approve eighteen community equity priorities on November twentieth, 2024. The commissioners' vote on final community equity priorities can also be found on our YouTube page at Commission on Racial Equity. Community feedback on the draft priorities is also outlined in a summary sheet, which is available via our CORE website. I would like to now provide an overview of the challenges we faced in the 2024 racial equity planning process. Despite CORE's success, we face significant challenges working to fulfill the New York City Charter mandate. We did not have enough, we did not have sufficient staff to support robust outreach throughout New York City or conduct a more thorough analysis of existing publicly available data pertaining to the community equity priorities. By June 2024, CORE had grown to a staff of six, with each of, with each area of work managed by one staff member. CORE's success can be attributed to the dedication of our staff, who are not only committed public servants, but who, who continue to demonstrate an unwavering commitment to the fight for racial equity and social justice for all. CORE was intentional in its decision to only use publicly available data to ensure transparency to all communities. Unfortunately, we experienced significant challenges due to limited data accessibility and insufficient data disaggregation within publicly available data sets. Public, publicly available data sets allowed us to see how limited the data was in its representation and acknowledgement of communities harmed by racism and social injustice. Much of our publicly available data is outdated, not disaggregated, and inadequate for a thorough analysis using a racial equity lens. Given our city's diverse population, various racist genders, gender identities, and ages, our research must reflect that diversity. These challenges are rooted in structural racism and must be addressed to truly advance racial equity and meet the needs of voters who overwhelmingly called for these changes. Our city pays lip service to diversity, but that diversity is not reflected in the data used to make decisions on policy, laws, and budgets that impact communities daily. In closing, I would like to refocus today's conversation on our North Star and the necessary steps for fiscal year 2026 budgeting process. Economic stability for all New Yorkers requires that government is accountable for their actions, whether it is to explain delays in their work, changes in funding allocation to neighborhoods or communities, or transparency in day-to-day work of government staff, such as child welfare, homeless services, health services, or police officers. The North Star of racial equity planning process, as well as CORE's mission, is to structurally shift how our city institutions operate and invest in communities harmed by racism and social injustice. When the public voted for CORE, they envisioned structural changes that would stop the killing of Black people and communities of color by law enforcement and those acting on behalf of law enforcement. Additionally, they were intentional about pursuing a new way of life that would allow them to thrive, as opposed to just surviving. Charting a new way of life included the ability to afford food, housing, transportation, and the ability to fully participate in community without having to live check by check. Structural change requires a sincere effort, political will, and significant investments, all imperatives that are made explicit by the Racial Justice Commission when it introduced the city's racial equity planning timeline. Noting the importance of budgeting and resource prioritization to racial justice process, the commission unambiguously expressed its intent for the racial equity plan to intersect with the city's budget process and prefaced the timeline with a clear directive for the city's executive branch to develop racial equity plans simultaneously with its development of the citywide budget before the budget is submitted to city council. In departing from this aim, the city risks undermining its capacity to ensure that all New Yorkers enjoy the opportunity to thrive. Finally, structural change requires accountability, and over eighty percent of New Yorkers agree, engaged with CORE, agreed that holding city employees and their agencies, including police and social service workers responsible for any harm and abuse of power is a priority for advancing racial equity in our city. Therefore, I would like to bring to your attention the recent ruling dated February twelfth, 2025, by NYPD Deputy Commissioner of Trials Rosemary Maldonado, stating that Lieutenant Jonathan Rivera should be terminated from his position for the murder of Alan Feliz that took place on October seventeenth, 2019. I hope that the family of Alan Feliz can count on you, Chair, and this committee to ensure that this recommendation is upheld without interference and that the Feliz family receives justice. Thank you.
Thank you. If we could take a quick pause, because I have to take a trip to the loo and I don't have any colleagues to carry me. Thank you. Okay. Thank you for your patience. Thank you for your testimony. Thank you for all the things you're doing for New Yorkers and New York City. I'm actually quite amazed at all the stuff you've been able to accomplish. And I feel like you've answered so many of our questions. I will, if you can just ask Rick the one she didn't answer while I ask random questions I had while you were speaking. So... When you talked about your data, the question that I had is, do you have access to agency data? Like, from HRA or, you know, a respective agency to, like, cross-reference? Or if you're looking for something or trying to answer a particular question about some type of something, do you have access to agency data?
At this point in time, we do not have access to agency data. We would like to set up MLUs with agencies to be able to pull in their data, but we have not had the opportunity to do that as of yet.
Okay. And do you have a data person on your team?
Our Director of Research and Policy serves as everything with respect to data. So, she has been creating partnerships across city government, but also with local organizations, as well as national institutes, like the Urban Institute, to be able to identify data sets that are pertinent to the community equity priorities. We also recently brought on an associate within that particular team that has a focus on quantitative data. So, between the both of them, we've been able to work with publicly available data. But I do want to underscore that in order to be transparent, we want to use the data that is publicly shared so that there is no questions by community on how we got to our particular finding. But in that, we want to further push the administration and city agencies to release more publicly available, to release more data to the public, but also to make sure that that data is disaggregated. And Chapter seventy-eight does call for standard disaggregation guidelines to be used by all city agencies. So, we look forward to receiving those when they're shared.
Yeah, I also wanted to thank you for your details. I'm like, wow, you're including your method, Likert scale. I'm like, ooh, I Like your skill. I'm like, ooh, I feel like I'm back in school. I hate I hate data classes. Anyway. The other question I had had to do with the same thing. You just you just kind of Answered it really, which is if you have any recommendations on The data that you one feel should be publicly available. And if any agencies are not disaggregating said data. What who are those agencies and what is that data?
Sure. So as it stands, Chapter seventy eight just call for data disaggregation. And our charter specifically also defines that term to really uplift its importance, both in the racial equity planning process. But also in the work of good government and in the work of multiracial democracy. So as it stands, there's no standard guidelines across New York City government. Whether it is for city agencies or independent commissions or task forces. That is something that MoERJ I know is currently working on. When that gets released, then we'll be able to see What agency, if any, is complying or maybe not in compliance, what technical assistance they need. However, that work to my under my read of the charter is a responsibility of MoERJ. We work with them closely on several things, and so we're more than happy to work with them to Move forward data disaggregation guidelines, but that that really is the first step.
Saying MoERJ is supposed to provide like a template for all agencies or Like explain that to me. What are they supposed to do?
So according to the charter, my read is that MoERJ is responsible for releasing standard guidelines. That all of government should use. I do want to know though that prior to MoERJ's existence. There were also New York City laws about data disaggregation that aligns with local law one seventy four. That was really sort of like the first early version of what racial equity planning can be in the city. But that local law was specific to just a few city agencies. Right? So Chapter seventy eight really expands racial equity planning to the entire, to all of city government. And with that must come guidelines. And I know that that is something that they're working on. And that's something that we will be looking to see in the racial equity plans.
Yeah, I know, you know, here in the council, a lot of times We're preempted by the state, we're preempted by the admin, but What I do feel a lot of people tend to do is like reporting bills and sometimes these reporting bills kind of like for state agencies to disaggregate their data. So it would be good to know what agencies either maybe are not complying. Because I feel like enforcement is just a problem, like we have these laws already written. But compelling people to actually follow the laws, a different story. So it would just be helpful to know. Because it seems like you have a sense or you could point out specific agencies, the type of data that is available, not available, disaggregated, not disaggregate disaggregated. It would just be some good information to have. You mentioned this line of much of the publicly available data is outdated, not disaggregated, inadequate. Various races, genders, gender identities, ages, our research must reflect that diversity. Do you? Do you have a sense of like, like what research are you talking about? Is it just like general or again, can you like pinpoint and say like in Department of Health? You know, they released this report and this report didn't have X, Y, Z with the NYPD. They did this, but it like, do you have specifics?
We know we do not have specific agencies that that I would say are doing it really great. Or not doing it at all. I think what we have found across the board. Is when looking at publicly available data that there is a I would say mismatch on what demographic categories are collected by city agencies. And what are reported, what demographic characteristics are requested and may be listed as voluntary. Or not required, you know, we also in our work offered respondents. To write preferred not to answer if they felt uncomfortable. But even having some of that voluntary data was particularly helpful. I will say we we heard the call for disaggregated data during COVID nineteen, the early stages of COVID nineteen. When a great number of our communities harmed by racism and social injustice were dying at a higher rate. Were experiencing illness and hospitalizations at a higher rate. But also impacted by all the social determinants of health. And then we started to see the health department. Shift also in how they were reporting. So we're seeing that disaggregation. But we do want to see that across the board. We want to see that consistently. So when we're talking about what reports. There is no report. There is no data share that should come from government that is not disaggregated. All of our data must always be disaggregated. But for race, ethnicity, sexual orientation, gender, zip code, chronic illness or disability. This is essential information to being able to make informed decisions. That ensure that our policies and our investments are addressing the people in the greatest need. And are impacted the greatest, whether it be by Natural disasters or climate change or a disease or potential vaccine or remedy. We need disaggregated data for every single report, every single reporting bill that comes out of city council. Should have specific instruction in the bill to disaggregate the data. And I would also say that we have a series of preliminary hearings that are coming up. For city agencies and when they are sharing their data, we should be asking them, what is the breakdown? Where is this investment going? Which communities? What are the demographics?
That's helpful. And it's. I appreciate you for for bringing that up as like a core issue because You know, I often say like elected officials were reactionary, you know, like something happens, we want to do something about it. We never really bothered to go back and see. You know, how the data is being collected, how various groups, entities like you can actually use the Use the data to effectuate change, at least the change I know I want to see. So. Thank you for flagging that. I will be doing some more digging into that because that is quite interesting. And personally fascinating for me on a on a nerdy level. So the another question that I have is, is Core currently fully staffed? And are there any plans for further expansion and hiring?
Sure. So Core, when Core started, we were approved to have twelve lines. Seven in the first year and five in the second year, the first year being twenty twenty four and the second year being twenty twenty five. Of the twelve lines, eleven staff are in place. The twelfth staff member was actually just recently secured her start date, which is March tenth. So we will have all twelve staff members by the middle of the month. We were recently approved for five additional lines in the January plan. And we are submitting the pars to OMB. And we will be putting up the job descriptions by no later than the end of March. However, we are asking for more staff. So in the executive plan, we will be asking for five more staff. And this is to help ensure that the work for local law ninety one and ninety two. Our New York City Study on Reparations and Truth Healing and Reconciliation. Can in fact be done sufficiently. And that's why we are we need more staff, but we also needed to build our operations and administration team. Because we will be giving out more money to community organizations through both of these bills. Plus, we are starting the second cycle Of community engagement for the next racial equity plan. So we are in a interesting time where we are still awaiting the preliminary plan. However, Core has already started planning for the second cycle. Which we hope to launch in March or early April at the latest so that we can Help the city get back on track with the original timeline in the charter. And be able to deliver to the city community equity priorities and indicators on October first of twenty twenty five.
Cool. Will Core be engaging in the budget process in relation to its own budget?
We are currently in conversation with OMB and we're also going to be briefing city council finance on what requests we're making. For the executive budget and then what potential requests are coming down the line. I do want to reiterate that Core is very much still in a launch phase. We had to redo our organizational chart, build out more roles. There are plenty of compliance roles in city government. For example, language access or disability access, EEO, or just being able to fulfill all of the reports that come out of city council. So we've had to create a chart that allows for a strong infrastructure so that Our community organizing and engagement director who managed to work across all five boroughs. Just themselves with, of course, the support from the team. But they have a they have a really big job and they're responsible for robust engagement. And they have taken on language and disability access. And so part of the work Is to take that off of their plate so that they can solely focus on community. As we have goals to reach more more New Yorkers in the next cycle. We've reached four thousand two hundred and twelve with a staff of six. We are hoping to reach over five thousand New Yorkers in the next cycle since we have some more staff.
Thank you. What about your engagement on the budget process as a whole? I know you and I have been having conversations around budget equity. So I don't know if you just want to talk a little bit more about how you envision playing a role in the budget process as a whole.
Yes. So our fifth charter mandate. According to Chapter seventy eight, our and our section indicates that Core Is to respond to requests from the Speaker of Council and Council Committees on matters related to racial equity. We're going to be sharing some feedback with city council when we meet that with city council finance when we meet with them. About some concrete questions. We are also planning for a forthcoming event. Which we're hoping to share with the public in the next week. That will bring together community and government. So both elected officials as well as city agency staff. To think through what are measures and processes that we can put in place. To assess the degree to which our New York City budget is equitable or is integrating equity into the decision making process. We do make ourselves available for all city council members to talk through Potential pieces of legislation as well as any key hearings that are coming up. And happy to share with them our data and what we've learned through community equity priority engagement process. To ensure that they have what they need to talk city agencies during their upcoming hearings.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that as a person who talks to your your office pretty frequently. But you know, I feel like these things should be codified, like there should, you know, it should be a requirement that certain things happen for certain bills and things to be passed. Whether it's, you know, some type of racial impact statement on our bills. Or even, you know, racial impact statements or thoughts on our budget. It is quite interesting to me how, you know, even here at the council, we do not Provide oversight on the budget with an equity lens. You know, it's typically focused on these like Big issue areas and respective agencies, whether it's overtime as an example. But we don't really go deeper into the micro of like, well, how is this agency actually Spending resources across the boroughs, across different demographics. For something that's not, you know, I would say like a sexy topic like catch basins. You know, for areas, communities of color that, you know, live in areas that typically flood. There has been some some thoughts and studies around the fact that catch basins in certain communities aren't cleaned. As as expeditiously as other communities. I mean, I think that level of analysis is very important. Because most of the issues that I feel people have in the city have to do with quality of life, like people just want to go home. And you know, sleep well, they want to be able to sustain themselves. And in the course of that, they're interacting and interfacing with So many components of our city. Again, that aren't just, you know, having to do with NYPD as an example, which is very important. But I think that the work that you're doing, that we're doing, I guess, around budget equity is is going to be important. Shout outs to Jimmy too, who has been really helpful in 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 that thinking as well. Has Core been given any opportunities to consult or give feedback on the development of a true cost of living measure?
We have not had the opportunity to give feedback. We have been in conversation with MoERJ as well as some of our partners about the importance of the true cost of living. We did alert MoERJ to the fact that many, if not, I would say all, I would go so far to say all of our respondents, all four thousand Two hundred and twelve respondents have said New York City costs are too high. And for that reason, we added a community equity priority that specifically talked about The cost of food, transportation and housing. I do want to note that when we talked about the cost of living with community. You know, we we had originally talked about The cost of high quality food. And we had community members across New York City saying to us. We're not at the point where we can talk about high quality food because we can't afford food. Because our pantries are our grocery marts. And so when we're talking about the cost of living, our community members who are living check to check. Who are just surviving, it's hard for them to hear us come in and talk about what do you need to thrive? And because what they say to us is, can you lower the cost of bread? Can you lower the cost of fruit? Can you make it so that supermarkets and the prices at supermarkets actually match what the neighborhood Has taught has with respect to their financial access to finances. I also want to just uplift that people have raised the high cost of transportation. And feeling that they have not heard New York City say enough that two ninety is too high. In the conversation of congestion pricing, we have heard a lot About what that toll is, where that money is going, what's the impact on drivers? What have we heard about the cost of taking the train? Or the bus and the cost of the ticket if you are caught by NYPD for jumping the turnstile? That there's a very serious economic cost that as we have seen can cost some New Yorkers their lives.
Thank you. Core allowed individuals and organizations to submit input online via Core's website. Could you provide us with more information on the input received in this manner? Would you say you received more public engagement on these topics? Or do you believe this option? Has allowed you to reach a wider audience? Could you share how many responses you receive via the online form option? And what sort of outreach Core has done to inform the public of its opportunity to provide input?
Sure. So with respect to our online option, community members have the opportunity to either fill out a survey. In one of the twelve languages, whichever language they preferred. If an individual requested a different language, we did work with the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs. To get the survey translated that went for individuals and or organizations that requested another language. For our survey, we used Microsoft Forms, which sometimes works for other people on their phones or their computers or sometimes didn't.
I hate Microsoft platforms, but I know it's like a government thing. I hate them.
Well, also
I just want to say on record, like, Microsoft platforms are just annoying to me, some of them, most of them.
Well, for us, we used Microsoft Forms because that was the most immediate tool that was readily available to us.
I just wanted to say for the record that I do not like these Microsoft platforms that you all are forced to use.
Well, so through the online survey, we received five hundred, over five hundred and thirty five responses. We believe we did get people who were not able to come to a community conversation. We had shared the survey link across all of our social media pages. Many of our staff also added the survey link to every email that went out, whether it was To a government partner or a member of the public. So we had a fairly robust campaign. However, we did not at the time Use any paid advertisements, which is something that we are planning to do in the next round. With respect to the feedback form. What we learned was that it was long. And where people struggled was in the way the draft community equity priorities were written. And so a lot of the requests that we received was to simplify the language, which we did for the final round. We also received a lot of both added themes, requests for changes that they want, that the Public wants government to make. requests for changes that they want, that the public wants government to make in the open-ended section. And we had a range of people that agreed and disagreed with the community equity priorities. Some feedback was so specific. For example, we had a draft community equity priority that started out with reduce the number of people of all ages in jail, prison, and court monitoring, and transform jails to rehabilitation centers. We had community members say to us, "If you had started the priority with transform jails into rehabilitation centers, we would have been more likely to agree." And so we got very specific feedback. That was both the arrangement of the themes that we were presenting, in addition to what they would like to see and how they would like to see the priorities be operationalized by the city agencies. We did receive, just to note back to local law 91 and 92, several members of the public say, "We need reparations now." And so people wrote in any topic that was important to them. And we had young people also talk about the cost of food and housing, half of themselves and their families. And we had elders talk about what resources are provided for young people. We had single mothers talk to us about whether or not they felt the community equity priorities was going to make their life in New York City as a single mom more manageable, and what we can do to support them as well as their kids. And then we had, again, very specific requests for, "Can we change this one specific operation in an agency?" The primary example that comes to mind is families saying, "Can you make DOE get our children IEP services early in the year rather than at the end of the year?" And so, again, it really ranged from reparations, this longstanding promise that absolutely must be met, to let's dive into one particular agency that was directly impacting that individual at the time, and raised that operation. And as we know, racial equity is both a process and an outcome. So we needed to hear, what are the specific things impacting people? And what do we, what feedback do we need to give to MoERJ and city agencies to ensure that it's in the plan? And this is also, I know we just talked about budgeting, but just want to uplift that the comment, the public comment that CORE is going to make after seeing the plan is really going to help us better understand how much of the city agencies' work is actually shifting structure? What are some early signs of shifting structure and investment? And we are going to specifically be looking for, which community equity priorities are they sinking their teeth into? And how our feedback can not only help move that process further along, but also provide city council with both content, as well as some, like, content for their hearings, for the hearings that are coming up, but also some thought-provoking questions that we hope you will integrate into your preliminary hearings.
Yeah, that sounds very good, and I'm looking forward to it. You know, I think, again, back to talking about myself, because I guess I'm an elected official. You know, we say a lot of like macro concepts, but we don't know like the how or the why, which is why I'm, again, just very personally passionate about the work that MoERJ is doing and that you're doing, because I think it gets us to the how and why. And I don't think we focus enough attention on that. Again, we know these systems are inherently racist. We say it all the time, but so much of the work that you all are doing, whether it's the true cost of living, the racial equity plans, the engagement with the community, provides the support and foundation for us to understand how and why, and to work towards tangible solutions versus just like rhetoric on like the inequities. So I appreciate that. What sort of, I mean, you kind of said it, but what sort of language access or translation services, if any, do you provide at the community organizing events?
So we do provide translation for anyone who requests it. I believe we ask for at least 24 hours' notice so that we can ensure that those services are provided. We translate all of our materials if requested by the public. What we are starting to do is also include executive summaries that are translated for some of our longer documents, like for example, our testimony today. And we translate our newsletters so that the community is able to see just sort of, what are our updates for the month? We are excited to say that OMB has approved a compliance officer line for CORE. And part of that person's role, in addition to EEO and disability access, will also be language access. And what we want to do is also begin to shift to get language translation support also from community groups. What we learned is that there are differences sometimes, depending on the language, on the translation we have and how community members read it. And so what we did in the first round was, one, we learned about this discrepancy. Through our partnership with the Civic Engagement Commission, we have started to sort of double-check some of our translations with community members before making them public. And then also identified the priority languages that the city sets out for translation and ensure that the online survey was able to be responded to in the person's preferred language. We do then, will translate any open-ended response that's written in a different language. Sometimes we go back to the community organization and say, "Can you translate this for us?" Or we will work with the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs to ask for their support so that anyone who is providing free response and their own personal thoughts, that that is able to be fully integrated into our analysis.
Thank you. Because you had such robust testimony, most of the questions you answered. And I always appreciate agencies who just answer the question. It helps for us to understand the work that you all are doing. I have two more questions. And hopefully, they don't get you in trouble. But during the last testimony, you know, to me, I feel like there's a lot of duplicity in the work. And I feel like, you know, it's bureaucracy, which I also hate. But, you know, it's this idea of like, and not to like be on my Doge tip, but like, like, government is big sometimes for reasons that like don't make sense. Like, why are we doing these things? Like, this is not actually like demonstrating impact. So I'm just wondering if you do feel there's any duplicity in the work across the administration, given the various, you know, like Tree and MoERJ and CORE? I mean, it just seems like a lot of people doing a lot of things. And I'm not sure that I actually like see the impact of all of this like effort. And maybe it just takes time, right? That might be it. But just wondering your opinion as well on like the duplicity of the work.
Thank you for the question. I am also always looking for efficiencies wherever possible. I do think that it's important to note that MoERJ and CORE are still very much in a launch phase. And so the efficiencies that we're hoping to see, really, I think we're not going to be able to see it until the second full planning cycle has occurred. And we've had the opportunity to both see plans, respond to plans, but also track investments and measure potential change. I think having MoERJ and referred to in chapter 78 as the Office of Racial Equity is a very important stronghold for any administration, for any government, as well as having an accountability office. Where I think that we could look to see where we can be more efficient is in how we are thinking of outcome indicators, measures, and data disaggregation. So we know that the charter already calls for us to have standard guidelines. I think that's going to be helpful in moving towards being able to identify where we can be more efficient with investments and programming. But I also think that it's important to note that we need more integration of racial equity across government in order to see efficiencies, not only in the way that we work, but most importantly, for the public. What we did hear from community members was, "Does the Health Department and the Education Department talk to each other? Are they creating a plan together? Does DOB and HPD talk to each other? Are they creating a plan together?" The public wants to see us work more closely together. We do think one of those ways is by having more publicly available data shared, but it is not the only way. We have multiple reports, as you mentioned earlier, that say a lot of things. And so we need to make sure that what they're saying is a clear concise message that advances racial equity and social justice for all. We are not there yet, but I believe that the processes that we have built into the equity infrastructure will allow us to get there. And it is absolutely my responsibility, as well as council's responsibility, to ensure that we are holding all city agencies accountable to doing that work. And I do believe that we'll be able to see that. But this first cycle is, because of our delay, has not been the best presentation of it. And I would encourage us to just closely monitor and hold accountable agencies as we move forward to make sure that they are doing the work we need to be more efficient.
Thank you. And just acknowledging, hey mom and hey niece. Hi. This is my last question, and once again, you kind of mentioned it. So just wondering your opinion on the impact of the racial equity plans on the budget, this year's budget cycle, given the delay? Like, if you feel like there would be any substantive impact to the budget because of the delay?
I would say for me, it absolutely is an open question to assess what the impact is going to be. I think not having the preliminary racial equity plan does leave a lot unknown, which is problematic. I do want to just uplift, you know, Commissioner Sherman did just speak to what really new needs is a small percentage, and we really should be looking at how are agencies shifting their internal budgets? And that some of the work in the plan speaks to that. Unfortunately, we don't know that yet. What we do know is that without significant investment in racial equity, without a substantive conversation in the budget process by all city council members and city council finances, we're not going to see the change or the impact that we are expecting to see. I think the preliminary plan is supposed to be a guide. And so going into a budget process without a guide is concerning, both from a government's perspective, but also concerning for the public who have consistently raised the same challenges. What I do want to also acknowledge is that there are racial equity impact assessment tools that are used in different parts of government. And what we have learned seems to be the missing is that the results from the tools are not raised in the decision-making conversations. And so while I am a big proponent of the-
It's like wasted time and effort. Again, I said that. It's like my biggest issue is that you do all this work, it doesn't get implemented. That's just the worst thing ever to me. Because it's just such a waste of time for government resources to do all this work for there to be no change or implementation. To me, it's just crazy.
Well, this is, again, why I would say MoERJ is an important stronghold for New York City because there is a very critical component of technical assistance that is not only looking at data from a racial equity lens, using a racial impact tool to assess a policy, a proposed policy or legislation. It is also about how are we creating a process that allows for community voice and racial equity and social justice data to inform the actual decision? And what support does city council need to be able to be courageous in those conversations and ask those questions? Now more than ever is when we need more elected officials stepping up for equity and stepping up for using data for equity. We know that there are racial equity planners across New York City, as well as public servants across New York City that are committed to racial equity and social justice for all. And they need us to have their back. And so we do that in preliminary hearings, but we also do that by holding agencies and the administration accountable by saying, "We will be looking to see when the plan is going to be released. We will be looking to meet with MoERJ, take them up on their offer for a briefing, meet with CORE, take a look at our response. But also, let's start to schedule some more conversations so that city council has the support that they need to ask the critical questions and make the hard decisions around funding so that we can actually see shifts in our investments, not only for the short term, but also for the long term."
Thank you. It's why I'm holding this hearing, because I'm very interested in this topic. And I certainly think more now than ever, we can't be afraid to speak the words and have the conversations and substantiate the words and the conversations and the questions with actual data that supports the work. So I thank you so much for being here. And again, I thank you so much for the work that you do.
Thank you.
And now we will go to public testimony. Okay. So I now open this hearing for public testimony. I remind members of the public that this is a formal government proceeding and that decorum shall be observed at all times. As such, members of the public shall remain silent at all times. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Further, members of the public may not present audio or video recordings as testimony, but may submit transcripts of such recordings to the Sergeant-at-Arms for inclusion in the hearing record. If you wish to speak at today's hearing, please fill out an appearance card with the Sergeant-at-Arms and wait to be recognized. When recognized, you will have three minutes to speak on today's hearing topic. If you have written, if you have a written statement or additional written testimony you wish to submit for the record, please provide a copy of that testimony to the Sergeant-at-Arms. You may also email written testimony to testimony@council.nyc.gov. Within 72 hours of this hearing, audio and video recordings will not be accepted. And with that, I will call up Jimmy and Sharon. You may begin. Either, or. Sharon, you want to go first? Okay.
Hi, Dr. Chair-
Hi.
-and the committee. Happy Black History Month. I'm really pleased to be before the committee again. You know, I come here in my personal capacity, but I was obviously very privileged to be the Policy Director of the Racial Justice Commission that put these ballot measures into law. And I can personally attest to the passion, the dedication, and the sweat of all the public servants in this room in making sure that we have structural change and that we're abiding by the spirit of these ballot measures. But I think we have to say what has to be said, which is, these ballot measures were put on the ballot in 2021. They were voted on in 2022. As mentioned by Chair Tajani, we are 400 days past the original deadline for the preliminary plans and well past the postponed deadlines for the plans. And I think, given the chaos we all see across our nation and in New York City, it's up in the air whether we'll have plans by the anticipated deadlines. And I'm sure everyone is offering those deadlines in good faith. But I think we also have to be realistic and say, "We'll see them when we see them." And with that in mind, I want to draw a very foundational question. I know we've talked a lot about specifics. And I know, Chair, you said you're less interested in the macro. But I think at the bottom of a lot of this, and as a lawyer, as a New Yorker, someone speaking in my personal capacity, I think we have to ask, is New York City going to continue to be a city of law? Is New York City going to continue to be a city of law? What we see in DC now is a challenge to law, a challenge to the courts, a challenge to the Constitution. And I think we're starting to see that ripple to New York City. New York City is the greatest city in the US. And I think it's time for us to decide as public servants. Are we going to be the city that fights- are we going to be the city that fights to uphold law? Knowing that despite, in our nation's history, law has often been used to oppress and marginalize. But we have, we have our own laws. We have a charter, which every public servant swears to uphold. And we have these racial justice ballot measures, which for the first time in our city's history, represents the will of the people, right? Not just legislators, not just past mayors, but New Yorkers who came out in the thousands and spoke, who voted in the tens of thousands overwhelmingly to change their city's central document, their constitution that we all uphold, and say, we want a different form of government. A government that works for everybody. A government that has racial justice. A government that, at its bottom, provides economic security for all. I think this is a big question we all need to answer in the coming days. It's not a theoretical question. We all see what is starting to happen in DC. And I'm saying this not to lay this at the feet of anyone in this room in particular, but I think it goes all the way up to the mayor, to the Speaker, to all of our elected officials. On behalf of New Yorkers, are we going to be the shield against the degradation of rule of law? I'll just be very quick here and make a point since we're the Human Rights Committee. You know, Eleanor Roosevelt and her international compatriots really put human rights on the map. It's a pretty new concept. But I think we saw after the rise of Nazism and fascism in Europe, after the rise of the Great Depression, they felt that human rights was something that we actually need to put into law, create a preamble and set a new set of values for government. And meanwhile, her husband, FDR, came into office to create economic security for all. Seeing the millions of Americans suffering of hunger, waiting in lines, and seeing that economic deprivation led to authoritarianism across the world and to war. And so those two together had the foresight and vision to put these principles, human rights and economic security, into law. And that's what led to the creation of the middle class for the first time in this country. And we know that many marginalized and racialized people were excluded from that. But they knew that these three pillars had to be upheld for the first time in American history to really have a middle class. And so we see the middle class disappearing here in New York City. We see it disappearing across the nation. And we see the American dream dying. And I know these sounds like, sound like grand points, but I am serious when I say I think we're at an inflection point in New York City. And this is not only about the ballot measures, but truly about our commitment to overcome administrative hurdles, to overcome staffing hurdles, and to put really resources behind what New Yorkers said they wanted to see. Otherwise, our Charter just becomes a suggestion. And so with that, I'll keep my remarks a little bit short. I'm happy to answer any questions. We've had many years' experience now trying to implement these ballot measures. And so happy to comment on my own personal perspective.
Yeah, I'll ask you the same question I asked Linda, which is, one, do you see any duplicity in the work? And then, two, you know, given the true cost of living hasn't been released and the racial equity plans haven't been released, both are significantly delayed. I'll ask you a two-part question on that, which is, one, same question as Linda. Do you think it'll, it'll have a tangible impact on this year's budget cycle? And the other question is, given the delays and the things that you mentioned and the political and social climate of this country, the state, the city, do you feel the lack of said plans and said true cost of living analysis is negatively hurting the most marginalized New Yorkers because these things are not, have not been released?
I'll start backwards. Absolutely, I think that the failure to release these plans and these measures is something that is taking away our ability to address the core issues of New Yorkers, right? I think last time I was here with the Chair, Jennifer Jones Austin, we were making that point that at the end of the day, these are ultimately about economic security. I think everything that's happened in our nation in the past year reflects the desires of Americans to have economic security, of New Yorkers to have economic security. And I think by not having these very fundamental tools, you know, the data, the plans, the measures, we can't even begin to understand what it is we need to do. Of course, we can think of big policy changes and understand the structural roots of economic deprivation. But it seems extremely misguided to me to not prioritize what in some ways is low hanging fruit, which is just measuring what we're doing. After all, we're, aren't we paid to improve lives for people? Don't we want to be able to show that, especially with elections coming up? To prove that government actually has an impact on the lives of people? So yes, absolutely, I think it hurts our ability. I don't want to speculate on the budgeting process, but I have to say, if I were a betting man, I wouldn't put a bet that it would impact the budget process. And I think it's just hard to imagine with how tight timelines are that it would. But to your question about duplicity, I have to say firmly, no. I don't think there's any duplicity. First and foremost, I think CORE provides an extremely essential function of raising the public's voice as a form of accountability, right? I think we heard Chair Tajani's testimony today calling out the delays, calling out the lack of data. I think that while that's not an enforcement power, I think it's necessary. I think you have to have a different voice that actually helps all of us do better, right? I think we all do better when we're held to account. So I think while some of the tasks may overlap, I think their missions are completely different. And if you hobble one, you hobble all of the efforts towards equity in the city.
Thank you. Have anything else you want to add?
Thank you.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Sharon Brown. Before I go, remember, Israel, release the hostages, let Yahweh's people go. Okay. For the bill measures, the data is definitely needed, but we also need to make sure that it's accurate. Sometimes there are delays in getting data out because after data has been released into the public, they find out it's not as sure as they thought it was. So sometimes the delays that we experience with data collection and it being released to the public is because by the time they release something that, I guess the measure was in '21 or whatever it was, by the time they release that, we have new situations cropping up now. So if they're going to release some data, they need to find a way to get people together to make sure the data is accurate. Because like in the medical field, you have data that says high blood pressure runs in the black community. And then five or 10 years later, they say that data was completely incorrect. So in the racial equity sector, some of the things that there are listing may not be accurate at this time, even though it's a short period of time. So we need to make sure that our data is accurate. So it might be a blessing in disguise that the data and things are withheld and not released yet because they need to make sure it's accurate. If they have to go back and find a different way to do it, and it took some time, we would be grateful that they have accurate data, that we don't have to keep doing this over and over again. I mean, there are going to be some issues to crop up. But if we can actually cure some of the societal ills as far as racial equity and the different bills that are there, if we can find solutions in data that helps us out, then we want the data forthcoming. But there might, there might be a reason that they're delaying the data, especially understanding how the data comes out. And then many times, it's inaccurate. So the civil rights and human rights, we need to make sure that everyone has the right to freedom of religion. That's Judeo-Christianity and Judaism. We need to make sure freedom of speech abounds. And this goes through the races. All races, all ethnicities, everyone needs to be able to have the freedom of religion, freedom of speech, they need to be able to have housing, the right to self-defense. The right to self-defense is the right to bear arms. We need to make sure that they are dealt properly according to their race, not in a racist D E I type of manner, but that they are dealt with with the sensitivities of their race. People should have food and clothing, and safety is a civil right. If we are talking about civil rights, people should be safe in their homes. They should be safe in society. We need racial justice. And the Bible is the basis for Constitution. There must be racial equities for the Jews, or no one else will have it. Yahweh Elohim is the God of heaven and earth. I have dark skin, and I want racial equity and all kind of beautiful things for me. But if the people of the Bible, the Jews, don't have it, everyone else is going to find they won't get it. If we focus on doing the right things by the Jews, who the whole world seems to be focusing on, if we focus on them and get them right, God says if we bless Israel, he will bless who blesses Israel. If you, while we don't have the data, the things that we can do, help Israel out, get their situation together. It will, it will correct the problems in the races.
Thank you for your testimony.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Is anyone else in the chambers or on Zoom testifying? Last call? Okay, great. And so with that, this hearing is adjourned. Thank you all so much for coming, and happy Black History Month again. Power to the people.